Good morning, everyone. I would like to begin by calling the Lake County Planning Commission hearing for August 28, 2022 to order. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First thing we will take into, first order of business we will take up is the consideration of Assembly Bill 361, findings authorizing teleconference meetings during a state of emergency. Have you guys had any time to discuss that? We're just gonna, do you guys want to just keep it the same?
Yeah, as far as discussion from me, I would suggest we just continue as is. It seems to be working well.
If I may, commissioners.
Good morning, Nicole.
Good morning. The standard here is to discuss the conditions of the emergency and how they essentially hinder your ability to perform as your, to do your duties as commission, and what steps would be necessary in order to ensure that in the face of the emergency, that your commission can continue to perform its job. And that is what the findings are in relation to this particular AB 361 decision that you're being asked to make. So that would be what you were discussing is essentially if you're, for example, looking at remote attendance, that would be tied into social distancing, the need to allow for commissioners to attend remotely because they may have, for example, traveled somewhere and been exposed, or have family that have been exposed and they don't want to bring it in, or they themselves have tested positive, or something along those lines, just as an example of the current emergency. So that is what you're being considered here. The standard is not necessarily what is convenient for the commission. It is for what, in the face of this emergency, this commission is needing to do in order to continue to do its job.
Okay.
Well, I believe that a remote attendance by members through teleconferencing should be allowed due to the fact that there's still some cases of COVID going around. So I believe that it's necessary for us to allow teleconferencing in the case that a planning commissioner is infected by COVID and can join us through Zoom.
Okay.
So I'd like to make a motion. If we agree with it, Commissioner Hess.
I agree.
The planning commission finds that social distancing remains necessary and that remote attendance by members through teleconferencing is allowed.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Also, looking for approval from the minutes of July 14, 2022, Planning Commission meeting. I have had time to review them. Have you, I know Commissioner Hess was absent, so it would just be.
Chair Price, if I might, staff does recommend that these minutes be continued to the next meeting.
Okay.
I'm working with our staff regarding some formatting changes to the agenda.
Excellent. So can we make a motion to move on?
Sure, Madam Chair, with that information, I move that the minutes from the July 14, 2022 meeting be continued to our next meeting, that date certain, which is August 11, I believe.
Okay.
Aye, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries. Now we will get into citizens' input before we take up our first agenda item. This is a time for the public to speak on anything that is not currently on the agenda. Any hands in the Zoom room, Jim?
I do not have anybody raising their hand in the Zoom room.
Thank you. It is almost 9:05, so we'll just wait for that, and then I will close citizens' input. It is now 9:05. We'll close citizens' input and move on to our first timed item. This item was continued from June 23, 2022. It's a public hearing on consideration of a major use permit, UP 19-42, and a mitigated negative declaration, 19-61. The applicant, Bottle Rock Farms FJA Trust, is proposing two acres of medicinal commercial cannabis canopy area and two acres of adult-use commercial cannabis canopy for a total of four acres of outdoor canopy area. The project includes one 4,750-square-foot processing building and a 1,000-square-foot immature plant area. The project is located at 9,900 and 10030 Bottle Rock Road, Calceville, California, and further described as APNs 011-057-22 and 011-057-23. Good morning, Andrew.
Good morning. Let's see, is this mic on? Yes?
Yes, he might have to get a little comfortable with it. There you go.
Okay. So for today's item, staff cannot move forward with a recommendation for approval as there are currently some outstanding violations that have still not been cleared up. Some of the project issues that we've faced from the two times that we've continued the project was initially regarding the three-acre conversion permit that the applicants had received, or three-acre conversion exemption. They received this through the Department of Forestry, however, they did not contact the county about that and obtain the adequate, or the appropriate grading permits and vegetation removal permits from our building division. So with that in mind, we continued the project to look into that. There was also concerns that the three-acre conversion, which was conducted prior to the submittal of the use permit application, was potentially piecemailing the project. However, the previous assigned planner had incorporated the three-acre conversion into the initial study, so the project was not piecemealed. And according to county council's advice, and Nicole would, if she would like to elaborate on this, she's, she can, is that they needed to correct the violation and obtain the appropriate permit. They have obtained the grading permit regarding this issue, however, a violation has not yet been noticed. They, one, a fine has been prepared by the building department, but they have not had the time to go through and do the appropriate notification of it with their schedules. So in addition to that, when I attended a site visit on, I believe, June.
Andrew. Oh, that was loud. My apologies. Andrew, if I could comment, just since you mentioned me, before you move on, so we're not too far along.
Okay.
For your information, commissioners, a three-acre conversion is an application submitted to the state. The California Forest, CAL FIRE, actually processes them, and it allows for the removal of timber without triggering 14 California Code of Regulations 1104.1A, which regulates the harvesting of trees and requires certain kinds of permits and so on at the state level to do so. However, that does not apply to people who say own a property and want to build a house and therefore are going to remove trees in order to do so. They aren't required to go through the arduous process of permitting themselves for, as a tree harvester for that. That's just one example. It is, it is a, it is a ministerial application that is submitted to CAL FIRE, they don't perform an analysis, and it does not waive any rights at any other local level. So if there are criteria at the local level, such for example as grading requirements or vegetation removal requirements, those must also be met. If that particular removal of trees is part of a larger project, then it should also be submitted as an element of the permit for that larger project. In this instance, the grading and the tree removal occurred, my understanding is they occurred prior to submission of a permit to the county. That has two results. One, if they were, if the person who was performing those activities was in fact doing so in Lake County, they might be required to do so, to apply to the county for a grading permit and approval for, under the, the part of the grading, the grading ordinance that addresses a removal of vegetation. It also has the impact, if it happens prior to sequo evaluation, it also has the impact of changing the nature of the location for evaluation of a sequo analysis. Sequo takes the property as it is at the time that sequo analysis begins, so if the grading occurs prior, we cannot consider the impact of the trees that have already been removed as part of the sequo analysis. The analysis analyzes the property with the trees already having been removed and the impact of everything from that moment going forward. And I'm happy to answer any questions if that, if that's, if there are any that come up for you going forward.
Okay. I appreciate that. Go ahead, Andrew.
Okay, so moving forward on a site visit on June 20, 2022, to observe the grading that had occurred and take photos to get to the building division so that they can assess the conditions and the appropriate course of action, that's when it came to light that a tribal consultation had been requested from the Big Valley Band of Pomo. And then, three days later, in the June 23 Planning Commission, I had requested that the project be continued again to allow for this tribal consultation. The applicant has submitted a timeline that doesn't quite align with our records and the course of events that, that we experienced. However, we did work with the applicants, we contacted Ron Montez of the Big Valley Band of Pomo and scheduled a tribal consultation for July 5, which would hopefully allow for enough time to resolve any tribal cultural resource issues that may, may be present by today's Planning Commission hearing date. However, that tribal consultation had to be rescheduled to June 19, which, in which case it occurred here between staff and tribal representative.
You mean July?
Sorry, yes, I do mean July.
Okay.
Thank you. With tribal representative here, and as a result of that consultation, a site visit was requested, which at the earliest could occur yesterday, June 27. So on, when we arrived in the morning, I met Ron onsite, we were both a little bit early, and we discovered that there was unpermitted cultivation occurring on the project. We were kind of, you know, a little surprised to see that there were plants in the ground. So in addition to this, well, once we saw that, I allowed Ron to go forward with his, with his site visit. He seemed satisfied with the site and is willing to move forward to, you know, resolve tribal consultation. I contacted our deputy director to inform her that there were, there was cultivation occurring on the site, and then followed up with that as directed to contact code enforcement, who visited the site later that day and is here to speak to that. And with that said, here's a picture of the two cultivation areas with, it's a little hard to see, but you can see that they have plants in the ground. I think the applicant is going to speak to this and, you know, describe it from her course of events and, you know, from her perspective. Moving on, the recommendations at this time, with these existing violations that have not been corrected in any way, we cannot move forward with an approval recommendation. The commission has two options, to either continue the project, to allow time for violation corrections, or deny the major use permit with or without prejudice. So, and with that, I believe we can swear in our code enforcement officer, Marcus Beltrano.
Thank you. You can come up to the podium, please.
Can you solemnly swear?
Jim, I don't mean to cut you off, can you, can you do it into the mic? Thank you.
Do you solemnly swear that the testimony you're about to give before this commission will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, help you God?
Yes, I do.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Just, can you just make sure you state your first name?
I was about to do that. My name is Marcus Beltramo, I'm the manager of the code enforcement division for Lake So I guess, so I guess I'll just go ahead, I thought there'd be a question or two, but. So we were contacted and we were alerted that there was information that there was cultivation of cannabis occurring at the site mentioned here, the 1003 Bottle Rock address. We went out there yesterday, we identified the correct location, it did have a address sign of 10030. We entered the site, the gate was open. As we entered the site, off to the left, we saw a cultivation area, and it had plants that appeared to be cannabis. At that time, we drove to the main house or the main building on this, on the property, I heard noises coming from inside. I approached the dwelling, knocked on the door, and then a lady came out. She identified herself as Jennifer Berg and the responsible party for the site there. I spoke to Ms. Berg, Ms. Berg stated that the plants were in fact marijuana, they were cannabis, they were not hemp, they were not CBD or some other type of plant. They basically, they had more than .03 THC. Per her statements, the plant, the, due to the chronology and delays and continuances at the Planning Commission, her scheduling, that scheduling affected her use permit, which ultimately affected the plants being in the ground. Basically, she explained that she had made a scheduled delivery date sometime in early 2022, that scheduled date was to be August 1. Her, her statements, there was a, an allowance, or in the agreement, it was allowed that there was a buffer zone that, where the delivery could occur prior to August 1, or after August 1, due to the nature of the product, the plant being a perishable item. So delivery was expected on August 1, she expected to have some kind of use permit in place by the time the delivery was made. The delivery was made earlier, and then this hearing happened today. So we did see plants on the ground, Ms. Berg did admit that they were cannabis, they were marijuana plants in the ground. Also observed on the, on the property were three structures, commonly known as greenhouses. I checked our database, we didn't have a zoning clearance or a building permit for those structures. The statement made to me, Ms. Berg, was that the structures were used to house the plants when they first were received, and then they were, then transferred and put implanted into the ground. I just want to go back and just address one issue real quick. We did not take a plant count, we did not have the time, due to the immediate issue that was brought to our attention, time constraints and scheduling issues, with what was going on that day, we did not have time to take a plant count. There were numerous plants, plants in the ground, but we did not take a plant count. We did not issue a notice of violation at that time, we do not issue a notice of violation till we have the proper plant count, so we can assess that penalty. Also, in further research into the matter, as I looked into past photos and history of site visits, it was discovered that there was some trenching and some plumbing done in connection to the water tanks that provide water to the cultivation site. I could not locate a building permit for that trenching or for those, or for the plumbing that was installed. The trenching looks to be a little more than 18 inches deep, that's usually when a permit is required for trenching. So at this time, we believe there is reasonable information to substantiate, or sufficient information to substantiate violations exist for cultivating cannabis without the proper permits. That's also a public nuisance violation as well. The erection or installation of greenhouse or temporary structure, oh, I do want to go back, Ms. Berg stated that the three greenhouses were, she considered to be temporary structures. I know there's a debate about temporary structures, but under the building code, there is a permit for temporary structures, so a permit, I, my belief, would need to have been, need to have been issued or obtained. So we do believe sufficient information exists to substantiate a violation of not getting a zoning clearance, and due to the size of the structures, it looks like a building permit would have been necessary for three structures. And then sufficient information exists to substantiate that a building permit was not obtained for the trenching and the plumbing installed. So that is the conclusion of my findings, or the determination of my findings.
Is there any questions for, for Marcus?
I do have a quick question. In terms of the plant count, so is this process still open and you're needing to go back?
So we would need to go back and conduct, conduct a site visit, and we would have to count each plant individually, so that way we can determine the proper penalty to assess in this situation.
Is there any kind of timeline for conducting that count, or?
So given the timing of the events here, I believe we got out there probably about 11:00 AM, 12 noon yesterday, and the hearing occurring today, I just thought it best to let the events unfold or take their natural course, and then based upon what decisions are made, we would make a determination whether to issue a notice of violation at that time.
Thanks.
And these are the pictures that you took yesterday?
Those are the photos, I was with another code officer, she took the photos while I spoke with Ms. Berg.
Thank you for providing these for us here. Let's go ahead, does that conclude your staff report?
Yes.
Thank you.
I, I do have another question.
Please.
In terms of, what would it look like, the other side of this process, correcting those violations and, and greenlighting everything?
So technically, the violation of cultivating cannabis without the proper permits constitute a high severity violation. They are given, under the code, 10 to 15 days, depending on our discretion, which period of days we pick or choose, to allow them to voluntarily remove and abate the issue. If the issue's not corrected within that 10 to 15 period given in the notice, then we would start to assess, or issue an administrative citation and start to impose fines.
Would that include the removal of in-the-ground plants?
Yeah, so abatement, in this case, would be, the only manner in which you could correct these issues is to abate or remove the plants from the ground. There may be other avenues available, but I'm not aware of them.
Thank you.
Any questions for him before I open it up for public comment?
No questions.
No questions? I'll go ahead and open it up for public comment, thank you again.
Thank you.
Is the applicant here or anyone wishing to speak on behalf?
Here.
Okay, well, this would be the time for you to approach the podium. We also need your first and last name.
My name is Jennifer Berg, and I'm the applicant for the project, project at Bottle Rock Road. We started our application process in November of 2019. On May 25 of 2020, we were granted early activation, and we cultivated for the 2020 season, we had multiple site visits, and we were always in compliance. On May 21 of 2020, we also were granted early activation for the 2021 season, and again, operated compliantly, had multiple site visits with various government agencies, and were assigned off and approved every time. On October 7 of 2021, my planner at the time, Satir Ham, requested, replied to my email requesting an update. She said that she was taking the month of November off work, and my public hearing would be set for the following month, in December of 2021. Our initial study came in on October 28 of 2021. On November 9, Satir again replied to my email for an update, and she stated our PC hearing would be set for January 13, due to the timing of the initial study review. I didn't hear anything for the rest of December or January, so I reached out to Satir, and I mentioned that our PC hearing has been tentative for December, and then again for January. I requested an update, and I also requested early activation for 2022, so that we could cultivate. The following day, she replied to my email stating that she would be resigning from the department in two days, and that I could email the general email for an update after her exit date. Two days later, I did connect with Andrew Amalung through the planning staff. I requested early activation via email, which I sent both to Andrew and to Satir. Andrew called me back the following day and said that they did not need to issue early activation for my project again, because my MUP would be heard well before I planted in the first week of August. He stated they were only working on early activations with applicants who would not be heard in time to cultivate, and preferred not clogging the already congested permit process with unnecessary early activations. On April 28, I had a planning hearing. The planning was, hearing was presented, my project was presented by Kim at Laco, and there were multiple inaccuracies in the presentation, including the PowerPoint. The information regarding the three-acre conversion was inaccurate, and discussion of a septic system, which does not exist at the project, was also inaccurate. Kim stated that she had prepared the night before the hearing at 11:00 PM and needed more time, at what point she requested continuance, and that was granted to a June 23 hearing. I called the program manager, Andrew Amalung, on May 5 to discuss the inaccuracies. I also mentioned that he needed to contact Big Valley Band of Pomo Indians for consultation, which was inquired about by one of the commissioners during the PC hearing. I also requested a meeting with Andrew and Laco to prepare for the upcoming hearing that would be held on June 23. This conversation via phone happened on May 5. On May 27, I emailed Andrew and requested to have access to equipment to share my own PowerPoint at my hearing to make sure my project was accurately conveyed to the Planning Commission. On June 1, I emailed the program manager, reminding him that he was setting up a Zoom with myself, himself, and Laco, and asking for an update. Again, I requested to have access to equipment to share my own PowerPoint at the hearing to make sure that my project was properly conveyed to the Planning Commission. I also again reminded the planning department to contact the Big Valley Band of Pomo Indians for consultation. This was June 1. I emailed the program manager, Andrew Amalung, an old project description that had been attached to the April 28 hearing, and sent him a copy of the current project description, which matched the staff report, to include at our upcoming hearing, so that everything was accurate. The following day, on June 22, Andrew Amalung emailed that Laco was too busy to do a Zoom with me to prepare for my project. He also stated that he did request a copy of their PowerPoint presentation for me. I didn't hear anything from Andrew for a couple of weeks, so on June 16, I emailed him requesting an opportunity to prepare with him for my June 23 hearing. On the 17, he emailed back and forth with me, and we scheduled a site visit for Monday, June 23, for him to walk the site and look at any grading permits that were necessary. I met Andrew on June 20, and again, we discussed him connecting with the Big Valley Band of Pomo Indians. He said he had still not yet contacted the tribe. I originally asked him to contact the tribe on May 5, and we're now at June 20. I asked if I could contact the tribe directly, and he said he wanted to connect with them since he had never connected with that specific tribe for any projects thus far. We agreed I would email him a reminder right after the visit, along with the cultural report for easy access to it. Later on that day, at 3:16 PM, I did email him the cultural report, along with an email from Mr. Montez of the tribe to Satir Ham back from 2021, where he specifically requested more information about the project and consultation. June 22, Andrew Amalung called me to tell me my hearing would be again continued, and that I would not have my hearing the following day. He said it had to be continued for tribal consultation. On July 21, he called to tell me that he would be having a tribal consultation on July 5. He had just finished meeting with Mr. Montez, who would do, like to do a site visit, and I would have to have a new hearing date set for August 25. On July 21, after getting off the phone with Andrew Amalung, I called Mr. Montez to schedule a site visit, and the soonest he was able to come out was July 27. Later that day, $130,000 worth of quants were delivered to my project site several days early. The scheduled delivery date was August 1, but the contract with the provider allows a 14-day delivery window for them to arrive early or late, depending on plant health and life cycle. The plants shall be delivered for optimal plant health, and they were ordered and paid for back in February 2022, with my understanding that my project would either have early activation or an MUP hearing in time for this arrival. On July 21, later that same day, at 5:30, I was informed by my staff and team of the plant delivery to my project site. The following day, after sleeping on it, I told my team to go ahead and plant the plants so that we wouldn't lose our investment. At that point, I really didn't have good options. Yesterday, we had the tribal site visit, and Mr. Montez came to my project. He said that my project would not pose a threat to cultural resources, and he would send documentation to program manager, Andrew Amalung, to that effect. Andrew also came to the site and then said that he saw plants in the ground. I mentioned that we did receive plants a few days prior and had to put them in the ground. He stated that code enforcement was headed to the site due to the plants in the ground. They did come a couple hours after that, and I met them onsite to answer questions.
Any questions for the applicant right now, at all? Okay.
I'd rather hear more public comment if there is.
Okay, thank you.
There's some Kleenex up there, too.
All right. Nice. Hi, my name is Fred Friedland. I'm one of the three partners of Bottle Rock Farms. Like you, we are dealing with the unforeseen challenges that have come up in a newly blossoming industry. As we've been navigating through this project, we made sure not to have any negative impact on the environment or county. A great example of this is the fact that not one neighbor or anyone from the community is here to oppose our project in the audience. We love our ranch, our neighbors, and everyone we've worked with along the way. It would be a great honor to receive our final permit. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Almyel Niedham, and I'm the chief production officer and one of the owners of Bottle Rock Cannabis. I just had a couple points to make also. So, our project costs about $2 million to run per year, and $1.5 million of that goes straight to the local economy, which if we don't get our permit, basically, that's out of there. And I wanted to also bring up the fact that we've spent $20,000 to $30,000 fixing our roads and improving the fire breaks all down our road. The fire department came out and said it would be a great spot to stage all of their equipment. And I also would like to say that without this permit this year, if we don't, if basically if you guys don't approve this permit right now, that it's over for us. And we, basically, we can't plant our plants after this date. So, this is our last shot. And the only thing holding this project back is just a lot of foreseen things, mainly with our permit getting delayed. But July, we had to make a business decision when those clones were done, whether to waste all that money. We have about $200,000, $300,000 into getting those plants in the ground, and we've been operating in good faith for three years. But so if, if the only problem right now is basically that we don't have our MUP because all these things are just revolve around that. So, if we've, I've heard from several people that you guys have some leeway of which if you're going to give an MUP, even if, because we haven't been formally, we haven't formally been cited for our plants being in the ground. It's like literally like one day off. But basically, we don't have, it's too late in the year for us to replant, and we don't have enough money to replant, and you guys are going to basically take this business out of your community. And we don't know if we can replant next year. So, thank you.
Thank you for your comment. I'm going to reset this so it doesn't go off in the middle of your comment. Okay, hopefully it doesn't. I apologize ahead of time if it does. Good morning.
Thank you, commissioners and staff, for hearing this item. And as you've heard all along, this, I've been watching this project and-
Can you state your name for me, please?
Karen Mantelli.
Thank you.
And I know the commissioners have had a number of projects before them, and all different levels and all different types of situations involved with these projects. You're dealing with a project, I think, if you've seen and read all of the documentation that has come before you about it, that they've complied with everything. And if you, you know, I read through the staff report over and over again, they've said they've demonstrated that they've met the regulations, they've approved it, they follow through it, that the staff has felt this way. So, on a one-day business decision, from what I'm hearing, we've all had to make business decisions in our lives. And if a one-day business decision was not in their ability to be able to waiver, if everything would have come after August, August 12 or August 15, the 14 days, it wouldn't have not even been an issue here. So, now we're before you with a staff report that suggests approval, suggests going through with this and approving everything, and they've worked in good faith. I guess I would just ask the commissioners to look into your hearts and look into the minds of the people who are, have this project and see if there's any way that you could work with them to let them continue on with this project. In lieu of the fact that a visit was made by Andrew yesterday, I don't know if the visit by Andrew was scheduled, if they knew that the Pomo representative was coming, that was one thing, but if they were not aware of Andrew coming as well, that might have been something. Because I think that those kinds of opportunities should be given to applicants, let them know when visits are coming. So, those are my statements. I would suggest that, as I say, you, you look into your minds and hearts to look at this project and see how you can help them move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Did you have anything to say to that, Andrew?
Yes, to respond to that, the tribal consultant, or the tribal site visit was scheduled the week prior, following the July 19 tribal consultation. And in the interim between them, I discussed it with my deputy director, and given the fact that the project was going the next day, we were, you know, basically seeing if we could still come through with an approval recommendation to wrap this project up. So, that's why I was asked to attend the site visit to find the conclusion of that, whether there were tribal cultural resources on the premise or not.
Okay, but was the applicant aware that you were going to be with the-
No, no, the applicant was not aware. But it's also my understanding that in these use permit projects, whether approved or pending, staff can, you know, basically show up at any time, so.
Thank you. Are there any hands in the Zoom room, Jim?
Yeah, we have one, Richard Durham.
Okay. Is he unmuted?
He is unmuted.
Okay, Richard, you should be unmuted. If you could just state your first and last name.
Hi, Mike. My name is Richard Durham. I'm also a cultivator and a cultivation consultant. I've just seen this as a really sad situation. These people have been working in really good faith, and unfortunately, the community, community development department has had quite a turnover, a lot of problems in both lives. I don't see a super great violation here. They didn't endanger the community in any way. They had to make a business decision, which is awfully painful. I can see that. I just recommend that you pass the project and, and your business.
I think you kind of cut there out there at the end, Richard. Are you, are you complete with your, with your comment? We might a lot.
Yes, I am.
Oh, there you are. Okay. Thank you.
Next, we have Teo Callum Birch.
Okay, you should be unmuted and able to speak. Please state your first and last name.
My name is Teo Callum Birch. I work for Bottle Rock Farms as a legal compliance consultant and director, and I've worked for several other cannabis companies, including Good Onward, Canacraft, and Nug Farms. And I'm just wishing to share the perspective of someone whose job it is to make a business compliant, and that is, it's difficult to be 100% compliant when multiple groups and moving parts need to come together at the, just at the start of an operation like this. And then I also wanted to share that Jennifer, Almyel, and Fred have excellent character and have supported me in everything I have worked on for them, and I know that they have put a huge effort, a huge and well-done effort into quickly and professionally taking care of the many items of compliance that their project has covered. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Anyone else in the Zoom room, Jim?
I do not see any more hands.
Okay.
I missed a bit.
Lee? Lee, we're going to unmute you. If you could please state your first and last name?
Yes, Lee Hervitz.
Okay, we can hear you. Go ahead.
Yeah, my name's Lee Hervitz, and we did the, my company did the hydrology report for this project. And I just wanted, in a previous meeting, there was some discussion about water usage and whether the project was sustainable. And I just wanted to reiterate the conclusions from our report, which were that there are sufficient water resources beneath the site to allow for sustainable farming at the property. Whether or not the well they have can support their project individually is a question really for the operator, but we found that there were sufficient resources beneath the site, and that additional wells, you know, if, if needed, could be drilled and would meet the county's criteria as far as not affecting neighbors' wells or having, creating subsidence or negatively impacting stream flow. I just wanted to make sure that that point was well understood.
Thank you. Okay, no more hands in the Zoom room. You're welcome to approach if you'd like to speak.
Good morning, commissioners. My name is Jennifer Smith.
In person? We usually have you on Zoom.
I know. I'm super happy to be here, but I'm here for some really important projects today, and Bottle Rock being one of them. And I'm emotional already, so I apologize. And I'm here representing myself, and this is super risky because in 10 days, I've got my own inspection, and there are no perfect projects. And I'm concerned with the process and the precedent that we're setting. There have been so many projects that are out of compliance, but that have not paid taxes, that didn't have EA for two years, that had three-foot-tall plants planted a month before their hearing and breezed through today's here, breezed through a use permit hearing. I'm not a rule breaker, didn't encourage anybody to plant early. When people have planted without early activations, I said, I can't support you. You're not in compliance. So, I understand the risk that this farm is under, and I understand that you have a job to do and that they did break a rule. But I think this project highlights the flaws we have in the system. I mean, we're headed on our sixth community development director in six years. We've had so much staff turnover. We hired Laco to help, and I say we because, you know, these are our community dollars, and we hired some fancy agency to help, and they showed up to a hearing ill-prepared, and not just once. And so, I don't know what the answer is. What I do know that this project is a victim of a flawed system, and we got to fix it. And I hope that you can find a way to make this project right. They've had their EA for two years. They did everything they could to get a timely use permit hearing, and they paid taxes. There's a lot of farms not out there paying taxes, a lot of farms with use permits not following all the rules. No project's perfect. We're all trying. We're building the plane as we fly. So, I hope that there is some way to make this project compliant and possible. Thank you for your time.
Appreciate your comment. Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, commissioners. My name's Brent Behuslaw, and I've had the pleasure of working for Jennifer, Fred, and Alms for the last three years on the farm. And I just have to say that I would have, I would not be rather working for or with any other people. And Lake County would be privileged to have these people in the community up here to help grow the community. They've done so much for me and my life and for other people that have, we employ at the farm, and just the community that we've raised around this little project here is, is pretty impressive. And just to throw it out the window for, for this, it seems pretty sad, and I think it's going to, yeah, just everything, we have a lot riding on this, and it's really emotional. I just want to say that I, it's been a pleasure of working with and for them, and I don't want to be anywhere else. And so, I hope you guys have a good day. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Is there anyone, is there anyone else that would like to speak? Okay, I'm going to ask one more time in the Zoom room. Jim, do we have any in the Zoom room?
I don't have any more people in the Zoom room.
All right. I'm going to close public comment, and-
Wait a minute.
Oh.
Okay, now they took, Trey Sherrill has raised his hand.
I'm going to reopen public comment officially. We will hear from Trey out in Zoom world. Trey, can you hear us? Can you please state your first and last name?
Hello, this is Trey Sherrill. Can you hear me?
Good morning. We got you.
Good morning. Thank you. I just wanted to make a brief comment. I think we all understand this, but it hasn't been stated. And, and it appears that the cultivation that has occurred on this project occurred so with a license and that these plants were in track and trace. Yes, there has been a violation of code. There has been a code violation, but I just wanted to make sure that it was stated. For the record, that it does not appear that, that the plants and any cultivation activities that have occurred on this property have occurred illicitly, for lack of a better word. Thank you, and have a good day.
Thank you. Any other hands in the Zoom room? I still have public comment open.
Okay, yeah, there is no more hands right now.
Okay, so while I still have public comment open-
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify what he just said, so that is true.
Oh, your name one more time for me?
My name's Almyel Niedham.
Thank you.
I just wanted to clarify what he just said. So, yeah, we just paid our $75,000 to the state, and we have all our metric tags for all these plants that are at the farm. So, I just wanted to make sure that that's clear also.
And while you're up here, someone earlier had mentioned the size of the plants and if it, if they were-
Some of the field hasn't been planted yet, and some got planted. So, we, we got our majority of our clone order a couple days ago, right before the inspector showed up. And literally like today, some yesterday, we sent those all the way back, and we just canceled the delivery for the second part of our, there's like a quarter of our field hasn't, or less than a quarter, 30%, 15% hasn't been planted yet, and 75%, 85% got planted within the last couple days. So, some are like that big, some are that big, and some haven't been planted.
Thank you. Any more comments before I close public comment on this agenda item?
There is no hands in the Zoom room.
Thank you, Jim. I'm going to close public comment and bring it back to the commissioners to, for some discussion.
Madam Chair, I have a couple of questions.
Absolutely.
First of all, speaking hypothetically, should this commission approve this use permit today, what happens with the status of your investigation, Mr. Beltramo, and an outstanding violation?
If you're, yes, please. And then I believe Legal has something to say as well.
While Mr. Beltramo comes up to the podium, perhaps I can give some light-
Okay.
-on your options at this moment?
Sure.
Under Article 51 of the zoning ordinance, 51.4, there are required findings for approval that you, your commission must make in order to approve a use permit. Number six under that section requires that no violations of chapters 5, 17, 21, 23, or 26 be existing. If your commission finds that there is a violation existing, then that finding cannot be made. And if that finding cannot be made, then you cannot approve the permit. Your options today are, as listed earlier by staff, to, in the, in the face of that, to continue the item if you think that there is a reasonable, the violations can be corrected in a reasonable time, or to deny the permit either with or without prejudice. Again, again, I'm sure you remember, with prejudice means that there's a timeframe in which reapplication can occur, and without prejudice means that reapplication can occur almost directly after the seven-day appeal period. But again, any decision you make today would also be appealable within that seven days to the board.
Thank you. Does that answer your question, Commissioner Hess?
It does. It does.
In a roundabout way?
Yes. Just speaking for myself, I think this is a really difficult and unfortunate situation, and I think Mr. Beltramo did exactly what he is supposed to do. And that happened to have occurred yesterday, but I can't, I can't fault the investigation you conducted or what you found. On the other hand, I think there are some really critical dates back in February and April of this year in which information was conveyed regarding the likelihood of a hearing, a timely hearing, that would permit you to receive your MUP and move forward. And the departure of Satir Ham, I think, was a setback that affected the timing and the timeline of everything from that point forward. And so, I'm in no way prepared to, to deny this project with or without prejudice. And so I'm in no way prepared to, to deny this project with or without prejudice today. The only option I would be prepared to consider is continuing and expeditiously addressing the legitimate violations which Mr. Beltramo did find. Thanks.
Commissioners, if I may, just briefly, there is no guarantee any permit that comes before you will have a specific outcome.
Of course not.
Correct. Yes. So regardless of when a use permit is agendized, there's a, there's always an equal option that your commission will deny that permit. So any actions taken in anticipation of approval of that permit is taken at the risk that that permit may be denied.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. I agree with my colleague and another comment from the public addressing the system that, that the applicants are being put through. And I do acknowledge staff and Mr. Belham for, Beltramo, excuse me, for doing, you know, his job. We've seen this applicant personally multiple times, and it just puts us in a very hard position business-wise, knowing that they could have had, I feel like they have been almost ready to, to come before us multiple times, and this is where we are now. I'm not ready to, to send them packing and deny their project either. I'm not ready to do that. Commissioner Chavez?
Yeah, well, the options that, that we have today, you know, they're, it's kind of like flipping a coin. It's really, you don't know what the outcome and the consequences that, that this, one of these options has for, for the county, for the applicants, for, for everybody here in the room. So I, I agree also that, that we, that the best option would be to give them a continuance to figure out those violations and just, to somebody that's been doing this project with early activations and the way that the timeline just happened on this last time, it's those issues that the system has. So it's, you know, it's, it's very hard to, to see what, what the applicant has been put through. And, and I understand that, that our job here is to just make a decision based on, on the evidence that we're given today, so.
And I don't mean to cut you off, but to echo that, knowing that they had early activation twice prior, and then to be told, I believe, that, you know, it wasn't in any type of concern, everything was moving right along, and then to, to be in that type of a position to, to just keep waiting and then to have this on their plate yet again, and then to try and continue it, we are definitely in a rock and a hard place. And there are violations there with them having their plants in the ground. I understand that. I would be a little bit more, a little bit more torn on my decision if the plants were, if they had been there, they're super mature, that they were obviously established versus the call that they had to make, knowing that they were this close and everything else. And then to not have the opportunity to get an early activation, that would have saved them a little bit of headache back in the beginning. But what we're faced with now is what we are going to do moving forward. Commissioners?
Madam Chair, may I? This is complicated.
Very.
And I say that because, for starters, if we do continue this, it would make sense to, in my opinion, to continue it to a date certain so that the applicant has some sense of timing. On the other hand, that would mean that violations would have to be completely cleared up because there's no point in bringing this back to the commission if there is still a violation in place. But the, the rub here is if the remedy for completing that, for fixing the violation and bringing this back here clean is the removal of the plants, then the applicant is in exactly the same spot that they described today. So that's why I want to understand, and perhaps you can shed a light on this, Mr. Beltramo, the process.
I apologize. There was one other alternative corrective action that can happen here. The first corrective action that we would list is to be remove the plants from the property. The second action is to get the, we would ask them to get the required permitting. So it would be one or two. So if a permit was issued, that would in fact cure the violation, bring it into a compliance state, and that's just another option that I failed to mention earlier.
And then there wasn't actually a formal violation written up, correct?
So to my knowledge, there have been no formal violations issued to the applicants. Code enforcement has not reduced our violations to writing. They've just been observed. A determination's been made, but no formal violation has been issued, nor has any notice or order to abate been issued. Again, due to the timing of events, we thought it best to let this situation take its course, let the planning commission...
Kind of bring it to light, let us know.
Well, I mean, depending on the outcome of here would depend on how we would proceed. So if there was a grant, theoretically, if there was a granting of, or issuing of a permit, that would correct those violations. But then the structure would have to come down or be obtained a zoning clearance building permit, and then the trenching issue would have to be resolved. But they have not received a formal notice of violation. So in fact, these are just determinations been made, but nothing has been formally issued. So technically, there is no action that has been taken against them as of today's meeting.
Okay. I appreciate that clarification.
Counsel is eager to weigh in.
Commissioners, that is an entirely, that is not entirely accurate. So there are, there are, under the, under the ordinance, a number of methods, depending on the violation, that code enforcement has to correct or to ask a violator to correct a violation. I haven't analyzed this particular violation. I can't speak to this one directly as to which would be applicable. However, issuing of a permit, it's not that simple to issue a permit and therefore correct a violation. And the ordinance that addresses violations is not, it does not have permissive language. It has mandatory language. Code enforcement does, cannot avoid creating a violation, for example, by not issuing a notice of violation. The violation exists independent of the notice. The notice is the beginning of the required steps in order to, for the county to meet due process requirements and, and notify the violator that they need, that there is a violation and that this violation needs to be corrected. So then the notice does not create the violation. The violation exists already, assuming there is one that has been identified. The issuance of a permit here would be a use permit. A use permit requires that no violations exist at the time of the issuance or at the time of your commission's approval, under the code section I cited earlier. That means that you could not issue a permit here and then deem the violation corrected. That is not the correct process. It is not, it is not the process under the ordinance. It cannot happen here. The violation would need to be corrected as allowed for under the ordinance section that addresses how to correct violations. And then your commission could review and issue the permit. However, there's no guarantee that that permit will issue. Even if, even if everybody is positive about a project that is, that is processed to be brought before your commission, there is no guarantee that that permit will issue. Early activation permits were six-month permits. They have a six-month life. Even if one is issued, there's no guarantee another may be issued. I would argue that the ordinance does not allow that more than one be issued, and I think currently we are still under moratorium. I think we might be. So an early activation permit would not have been an option, but even if it had been applied for, there's no guarantee that, that, that permit, which is a permit on its own, would have been issued. None of these are a guarantee. A person applies for them, and they cannot act for the actions that that permit would, they cannot act as that permit would allow until the permit is issued. And again, there is no guaranteed outcome as far as permit issuances, no matter how positive anybody may be ahead of time. And correct, someone may be correct in their assessment of a particular project, that they've done everything they can, and they've done all that they're supposed to, and then it goes before your commission or any other decision maker. But there is, again, always a possibility. Article 41 requires certain things that the commission may find are not met here. Even if all of the fundamental use permit requirements for the, for the particular use applied for are met, Article 41 may not be met, which requires other kinds of things that sequel may not be met. So it all depends, and it all depends on your analysis at the time of the hearing, and not everybody else's positive feelings beforehand. So your issuance of a permit here would not correct the violation, and a violation exists independent of a notice being issued of the violation. And it would need to be corrected, assuming your commission finds that there is, based on the information provided to you, that there is a violation existing, and you can't make the finding that is required for the issuance of the permit, then the permit could not be issued. I'm hoping I didn't muddle that too badly.
No, what you say makes sense, except that I take issue with that, and I'm not an attorney. But I don't believe that the applicants would be here today in this situation if things had not occurred much earlier in the year internally here that set them on this course for almost certain destruction today. And the, what you cite, I understand, but that in no way addresses things beyond the applicant's control that occurred within the community development department at critical stages earlier in the year. And I don't think what Mr. Beltramo just said, he would have said for fun. I don't know if that means there are other examples, sir, of when the violation has never been filed because corrective action by the commission was taken sooner. But I, I understand what you say, but I feel like that puts all the blame on an applicant for a violation that was discovered just yesterday when things that occurred here internally are what in fact created the situation today. That's my take on it.
I understand your concern. I understand the commission's concern, and the history of this application is unfortunate. However, what's before you today are the findings that are required by the ordinance. And I've outlined those. The, the actions taken that were discovered yesterday by code, by staff and code enforcement were actions that the applicant is requesting permission to do under this use permit. They did not have the use permit. They do not have the use permit. They do not have permission from the county to use this property in this particular way. That is what they are requesting from the commission. And they took the actions anyway.
But it's not necessarily true that they don't have those permits because of malfeasance on their part rather than internal problems here within the planning department.
No, no, that is correct. I'm not suggesting, I'm not laying blame or... I understand that. I do understand that. However, I'm, and I've wrestled with, with any way under the ordinance, under the current structure of the county's code, to assist in moving this forward. However, if, it's very clear in the ordinance, if, if you have found that there is a violation, then, then you cannot make that finding, and that finding is mandatory for the use permit.
Have we in fact found that there's been a violation? We've had a report that we received today about a violation that has not yet been filed. So this commission hasn't found anything with regard to a violation yet today.
And that, and that's where I stand with Commissioner Hess. It's been brought to light. Is there, you know, have they formally been, you know, staff was out, code enforcement was out, they're aware of the situation. Here we are. We heard all sides of everything, but I really feel that it goes back to internal and having to see this applicant multiple times and just the way that the timing is. It's, it's a very unique situation. I understand where you're coming from. That's like, for, in my state of mind, it's, everything looks, everything looks like it's supposed to be, and everything is where it was at. And the fact that they did not have their hearing date prior to them going out, yes, I understand. That is where we're at. That is, that was their, that is their violation technically. I mean, part of it would be the plants where they were supposed to be grown on the, where it is situated on the project description is my understanding. So I'm, help me out, Hess.
Speaking hypothetically, should, given your counsel and advice, should this commission approve the permit today, would that not hold unless it were appealed?
Any decision your commission makes during a planning commission hearing is a valid decision until it's challenged. The board can bring its own challenge on its own motion, and any interested member of the public can do so as well, as provided they meet the criteria within the zoning ordinance for the appeal.
What if there is no appeal? Does our decision stand?
Yes, it would.
Thank you.
And I will reiterate that a violation exists whether or not code enforcement has actually followed through the process of issuing a violation notice. The notice just begins the process.
Well, we're not attorneys, but we would still be making a finding on the part of the commission.
If you are certainly making the findings as required for the use permit, and I would, I would request that your commission explain what those findings are, since there's been so much discussion around that issue, what they are and why you think you could make, and why you were making the finding, that particular finding.
In terms of my findings, I would refer counsel to my previous comments here today.
I, I feel like I've stated and restated kind of where I stand on this as well. Commissioner Chavez? I don't want to put you in the hot seat, but...
May I say something in that regard, Commissioner? I've said this before, and I don't know what counsel thinks about this, but we are in a situation when there are only three commissioners here today, which means whatever action we take has to be unanimous. And if it is not unanimous to, to issue the permit, then this, this issue also falls again today. So any action we take would have to be unanimous, and I often think that's unfair to any applicant when they do not have the benefit of the full commission's attention and, and votes. It puts a particular burden on the three commissioners who are present. But I think my position on this has been made pretty clear today.
I, I agree. And, and not to undermine anything that Commissioner Hess has said, but yes, it does make it very difficult when there's only three of us up here, for sure. If you have any questions or like reservations that would help you feel, you know, do you want to take a five-minute break?
No. I mean, I don't need a break, it's just, what, what our job is today is, it's very, very tough, which it could have two, the two outcomes that we have is letting this business, you know, disappear from the county because of the technical issues that happened. Well, same thing that we discussed, it's just, just making this decision is, you know, it's very, very, very challenging.
And, you know, my concern, going back to the internal things, you know, this could be the first of many. And, you know, people, that this is their livelihood, and when, you know, timeframes are, are so construeous, and they, they really put a, an added stress on, on cultivators and farmers, that's something to take into consideration, not to mention the applicant's time and money that it takes for them to float the projects, hop through the, you know, jump through the hoops, go through all the changes between planners, staff, all of it. And I just want the public and the applicants as a whole to know, you know, staff works very hard, code enforcement works hard. They are all thrown into this together and piecemealed, and projects that are passed on and thrown into a whirlwind of things. And unfortunately, time goes by and, and, you know, and this is where we're at. and, um, unfortunately, time goes by, and, and, you know, and this is where we're at. I do commend staff for, um, taking on all these projects and doing the best that they can. I, I understand. This one just seems like, it's just a little excessive with the, with the timelines, and, again, I stand where I stand on this.
Is there a room for one more comment?
I actually have closed public comment.
Could you reopen it?
Could I reopen it?
If your commission chooses to reopen the public comment, it would be for anyone who chooses to comment. That certainly is your option to make, but I will remind the commission that this is not, um, public comment is not a time for conversation back and forth and addressing each individual person's concerns.
Thank you. I'm gonna keep public comment closed.
Not to further put pressure on my, my friend and colleague, but I am prepared to offer a motion, Madam Chair.
I'm, I'm prepared for you to prepare your motion.
I move that the planning commission find that the mitigated negative declaration IS nineteen dash six one, prepared for Bottle Rock Farms FJA Trust on property located at ninety-nine-hundred-and-one-oh-three-oh Bottle Rock Road, Kelseyville, California, nine-five-four-five-one, further described as APNs oh-oh-one-dash-oh-five-seven-dash-two-two and oh-oh-one-dash-oh-five-seven-dash-two-three, will not have a significant effect on the environment with amendments to increase the effectiveness of biological resources mitigation measures by oh-one, by oh-two, by oh-three, and add mitigation measure by oh-five as recommended in this staff report, and therefore a mitigated, mitigated negative declaration, along with the accompanying mitigation monitoring program, reporting program, MMRP, shall be approved with the findings listed in the staff report dated July twenty-eight, twenty-twenty-two.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Madam Chair, I further move that the planning commission find that the major use permit UP nineteen dash four-two, applied for by Bottle Rock Farms FJA Trust on property located at ninety-nine-hundred-and-one-oh-three-oh Bottle Rock Road, Kelseyville, California, nine-five-four-five-one, further described as APNs oh-oh-one-dash-oh-five-seven-dash-two-two and oh-oh-one-dash-oh-five-seven-dash-two-three, does meet the requirements of section fifty-one-point-four and Article twenty-seven, section one A T I I I G I I I of the Lake County zoning ordinance, and the major use permit be granted, subject to the conditions of approval and with the findings listed in the staff report, dated July twenty-eight, twenty-twenty-two.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Please note that the applicant or any interested person is reminded that the zoning ordinance provides for a seven calendar day appeal period. If there is a disagreement with the planning commission, an appeal to the board of supervisors may be filed. The appropriate forms and applicable fees must be submitted prior to five P M on or before the seventh, seventh calendar day following the commission's final determination. I'm showing a time now of ten-thirteen, we're going to take a quick break and return back at ten-eighteen.
Thank you, guys. Thank you.
Good morning, um, thank you for coming back. It is ten-twenty-one, we are going to take up our second agenda item. It, um, excuse me, it is an item continued from June twenty-third, twenty-twenty-two. Yes, public hearing on consideration of major use permit UP two-one-dash-zero-six, and that a neg, or that a determination has been made that this project required a mitigated negative declaration to consider the adoption of, or the adoption of and to adoption of an initial study IS two-one-dash-zero-six. The applicant Aquaba LLC is proposing a major use permit to A-type-three medium outdoor licenses with a combined total outdoor canopy area of seventy-three thousand five hundred and sixty square feet, and a A-type-two-B small mixed-light license with a total combined mixed-light canopy area of nine thousand seven hundred and twenty square feet. The project is located at one-one-seven-nine-five North Drive, Clear Lake Park, California, further described as APNs zero-one-zero-dash-zero-one-nine-dash-one-five and zero-one-zero-dash-zero-one-nine-dash-one-zero. And good morning, Byron. Are you going to be presenting for us today?
Yes, good morning. I have, uh, can you see my screen?
Yes, we can see your screen.
Okay. Um, thank you, Madam Chair, Mayor of the Commission. Uh, this project was heard by the planning commission in June. Um, it is, as you stated, two type A, two A-type-three outdoor cultivation licenses and one A-type-two-B mixed-light on a parcel that's eighty-eight-point-six-six acres in size. This project was continued by the planning commission due to concerns over water supply and visual impacts. Staff had come with a recommendation for approval to the planning commission meeting. Since the publication date of this last package, a revised hydrology report has been submitted, as well as a visual analysis. It came in in between, um, the publication of the packet and the agenda. We have a staff, our Lakos staff hydrologist has reviewed the hydrology report and did have some concerns, I know there has been some concerns in the past, um, of the, uh, commission regarding a lack of peer review on the hydrology reports. So we did have our hydrogeologists take a look at it, and those comments have been conveyed to the applicant. I think that we can go ahead and turn it over to the applicant's team to, uh, explain what they've done since the last hearing, to, um, uh, to discuss the water supply and the visual, and then respond to the, our, uh, comments.
Thank you, Byron. And who should we be looking for? Are they in the Zoom room?
I'm looking for the, uh, the applicant to, um, Trey or the, uh...
Is the applicant in the hearing room?
Yes, I have him, I'll move him over.
Okay, then we also have, um, the applicant as well as in chambers.
Hello?
Yes, please state your first and last name.
Um, my name is Trey Sherrill. I, um, am an advocate for Aquaba LLC, the Aquaba Farm application. Sorry that I could not be there in person today. We, uh, we had the original hearing, uh, probably a little bit over a month ago. Um, it was my understanding from that hearing, there were, there were two main concerns that, uh, for visibility of the project, uh, from Clear Lake, as well as, um, as well as, uh, a concern that water was, um, from the groundwater well, on, the onsite groundwater well and water supply source for the proposed farm, uh, was coming or connected to, uh, to Clear Lake. Since that time, we provided a visibility analysis, um, that, and, and in doing so, we, uh, we went around the lake, uh, taking photos of the, the property and the project area. We erected a neon orange, um, windsock in, in the project area because it's, well, at the end of the day, it turns out, you couldn't even see the neon, uh, orange windsock, but we tried, we tried to make it more visible to, so it would help with the analysis. But at the end of the day, the only thing that we were able to see, um, from around Clear Lake was the existing onsite, um, barn, uh, and, um, but all of the cultivation areas were not visible, um, from, from the areas we went to, and the pictures kind of demonstrate that. As Byron alluded to, we had an additional, um, hydro, hydrogeologic, uh, assessment performed, uh, prepared, uh, and, uh, Lee Hervitz, uh, is on, and I, I'm hoping he would be willing to speak to that, but, uh, basically, I'll, I'll just kind of summarize. Uh, there was no concern, um, due to the, due to the far distances, uh, between the existing onsite groundwater well and Clear Lake, uh, there was no concern that water from Clear Lake was connected to the water, or directly connected to the well itself. Um, and I'm willing to, um, answer any questions you may have, or I could turn it over to Lee to discuss the hydrology study, if that's what the commission would desire.
Thank you. Um, I know that Commissioner Hess, I believe you were absent the first time this one came around.
I was, but I've, um, been a good student and thoroughly familiarized myself.
You did your homework, okay.
The minutes and today's paperwork, et cetera. Thank you.
Okay. Um, yeah, if the hydrologist wants to, you know, say a couple things, that's, um, that's fine, and I do appreciate the, um, the visibility survey that we were provided.
I also reviewed the, uh, video, Madam Chair.
So is he, is he not going to speak?
Yeah, I'm here. Uh, can you guys hear me? This is Lee Hervitz.
Good morning, Lee. Yeah, we can hear you.
Um, yeah, I just wanted to, um, you know, say that we did do a hydrology study, um, and we looked at, one of the things we looked at was the, um, average recharge to the aquifer that we would see annually, and whether or not this project could, um, support, or the aquifer could support this project. Lake County doesn't have a lot of historical information, um, that we're able to rely upon for recharge values of aquifers, so we look at, um, regional, uh, studies, and in this case, we looked at a, um, scientific investigation report for the Alexander Valley, as well as the, um, Santa Rosa Plain Watershed Groundwater Management Plan. These documents provide us with, um, average and regional recharge values for, for aquifers in the Northern California region. They, their basins, their upland areas, so there's a wide range of recharge values, and, and we try to pick something that we feel is appropriate for the site based on the conditions. What we see in the Santa Rosa Plain is that the average recharge is fifteen percent of the rainfall. And it can be a lot lower than that if you're in a shallow bedrock or high upland area. And we've seen, uh, numbers as low as almost two percent in the Alexander Valley. Um, these, these, uh, unfortunately, we didn't reference these, these, uh, reports in our assessment, but we did talk about the numbers, and if, and so if we need to, we can reference these, uh, these USGS reports. But for this project, we, we went ahead and just assumed a four percent recharge rate, which we think is very conservative, um, and using that recharge value, we were still able to demonstrate that there was adequate groundwater resources for this project, even during drought conditions. Um, and when I say adequate, I mean that there is more recharge than is being used every year. Uh, and so, to me, that, that indicates that the project is sustainable. Even, and I think we used a value of four percent for recharge, and I think that even if we used a value of three percent, the project would still show as being sustainable. So that was, that was the main gist of how we came up with whether or not there was a, enough water resources. And then to do a, uh, calculate, a calculation for the radius of pumping influence, we use equations that are listed in a, in a very widely accepted, uh, uh, publication called Groundwater and Wells, published by Driscoll. And, um, we're able to use equation nine-point-one-one in a, in conjunction with Appendix sixteen-D, and come up with a value for the, the radius of influence, and that's based on, on, um, theoretical value. So it's not, we don't use observation wells, but this theory, um, this calculation is based on the pump test data, the drawdown, the yield, and the specific capacity, as well as constants for confined and unconfined aquifers. So this, this is a pretty, um, true and tested, uh, theory, uh, and we were not able to field verify this radius of influence, but we do this in many cases, um, as a standard for how we, how we do, uh, radius of pumping influence. And we feel that it is a, um, valid and just way to do that. So that, about, so when we did our assessment of radius of influence, we found that the well did not pump far enough to reach, uh, Clear Lake, not even close. And we also assessed that the aquifer was a fractured bedrock aquifer, which is more consistent with unconfined conditions. Um, so saying, giving that, we don't think that there's connectivity between Clear Lake and the aquifer beneath the site, and we don't think that the radius of pumping influence will affect water levels in Clear Lake. And I'm, I'm not trying to get too, uh, technical here, but I just wanted to address some of the things that, um, that may come up from, from peer review.
Okay, thank you. Any other, uh, comments or questions? Okay, um, I believe... Okay, um, so since we have all that information, we will go ahead and open it for public comment. Anyone wishing to speak on this item? Questions, comments?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Hey, hey. Um, I will fill one of these out in just a minute. Um, Erin McCarrick, City of Clear Lake, and I would like to offer my support for this project. The owners of this project, applicants of this project, are also involved with the City of Clear Lake. They, uh, go above and beyond, um, their involvement with the community in terms of working with law enforcement to provide extra cameras. Um, I speak with our chief of police a lot to say, how do we prevent, you know, fly-by-night operations in the cannabis industry? How do we make sure that people who apply for these things actually stay, that they complete their project? And that what they have in Clear Lake, that, um, they work with the city, they work with the fire department, they work with the chief of police, to make sure that they are going above and beyond with compliance. So I'm sure if there was any sort of, um, conditions of approval for this project, they'd happily do that. We are working, um, with some of the projects in Clear Lake that are, uh, water-sensitive to do monitoring, and if there isn't a historical data, that's why we, in the cannabis industry, have to report to the water board every year. This is a great way to get data, regardless of the project, you know, hotel, golf course, winery, et cetera. This is a great way to start getting data. Um, yeah, and they're just, they're great sponsors of community things, so highly support this project based on the facts and also based on, um, uh, character. Can I bring this back? Can I fill this out? Sure. Thank you. Sure, go ahead. Good morning.
Morning, morning. Quincy Jackson, City of Clear Lake. Just kind of want to say, I'm, I'm with the project here. Kind of want to explain a little bit about what we doing here at Aquaba Farms. We've been in the cannabis industry in Lake County license in Lake County for over twelve years now. Um, so we're not a fly-by-night, we're not a facility coming here. We've been living in this community since two thousand and seven. We own homes here, property here, other businesses here, and, uh, so we just want to kind of let y'all know, we're not a fly-by-night, we're not coming trying to get into, essentially, we're not trying to tap into Lake County resources. We are a part of this community, have, have been here in this community for a while. My family moved here in nineteen-seventy-nine, um, so we, we kind of been around for a while. So it's, again, just want to let you know, we're not a fly-by-night, we are here, part of the community, we have other businesses here, we do real estate development here also, um, cattle ranching, so we are here, um, our wells are there, wells, water is being used there, that's why we did not one, but two, uh, of these reports. This is our second one, I believe we presented to y'all guys. So any questions you have, um, as far as visibility, uh, we also live in this community, um, on this street. So it's in our neighborhood, we're not going to other people's neighborhoods, this is our home, and I just wanted to express that with this board here, and, and let any questions I'd be more than willing to answer. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm not gonna cry. Good morning. Good morning, Jennifer Smith. It was interesting when we heard this project before, that one of the concerns was that you might be able to see the project from the lake. I, I don't, I read through the ordinance, and I don't see that. Um, so I hope that we can just disregard that commentary, I get it, it's a concern of a constituent and everybody, um, I recognize people's concerns, but definitely not something that should hold us up. Quincy has been reaching out to me for two years that I've been president of the LCCA, always making sure he had the most updated information, that he was in compliance. Um, he's, he's a member of the community, he's been here for a long time, and I think it speaks well to our cannabis community when we've got people that have been here for a long time, that are still engaged, that are continuing to engage and expand their business footprint in the county and support the county. So with that in mind, I would, um, additionally like to recommend that this, um, project be approved. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other comments in chambers? Okay. Jim?
Yeah, we have one in the Zoom room, Richard Durham.
Hello? Can you hear me?
We, we can hear you. We, we can hear you.
Yes, again, this is Richard Durham, uh, cannabis cultivator and cannabis, uh, cultivation consultant. I'm in no way related with this project, but I've known Quincy for a while. He's a good businessman. He has a great reputation. And, uh, I think the county would do well by approving this project. And that's all.
Okay, thank you. No other comments, Jim?
And there is no other hands on the Zoom room.
Okay, looking around, I don't see anyone else wishing to speak. I will close public comment and bring it back to the commission for discussion.
Hi, I'd like to start. Um, so I met with the applicant on Monday, this Monday, July 25th, around 5:00 PM. Since it is part of my district, um, I had the opportunity to meet Mr. Jackson and his wife. We did a walk-around, the, the cultivation site, um, showed me around the, the property. And it was very well maintained. They had, uh, kind of like the picture that we see here on the visibility survey, uh, front cover. That's what the site looks like today. Drip irrigation system and above-ground pots. They said they had these, the setup for 18 months since they were waiting for, uh, early activation or, or to get their, um, to get their project going. So, um, yeah, so the question, I guess, or the, uh, the reason why this project didn't get approved last time, as it was stated earlier, was because of, uh, visibility concerns and the water, um, usage, um, or the, uh, water supply. So, yeah.
Yeah, um, I remember from the last meeting that the concerns, you know, from another constituent was the, the visual and the making sure it wasn't pulling water from the lake. I feel like, um, both of those concerns have been addressed, um, at, at this time.
Commissioners? Just to clarify, aesthetics are in fact part of the analysis for use permits. And, um, both under the zoning ordinance and SEQA evaluation aesthetics, including view shed and impacts to view shed are a part of your analysis and included.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, although I was not present for the first hearing, I am familiar with everything. And I do think that the visi- visibility survey and the hydrology, um, report is important additional information.
Okay. Are you prepared to make a, a motion?
Um, if there's no further discussion, I'd be prepared to make a motion.
Sure.
I move that the Planning Commission find that the major use permit UP 21-06, applied for by Aquaba Farms LLC, on property located, uh, at 11795 North Drive Clear Lake Park, further described as APN 010-019-015, will not have a significant effect on the environment and therefore a mitigated negative declaration shall be approved with the findings listed in the staff report dated June 20, June 23rd, 2022.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
I further move that the Planning Commission find that the major use permit UP 21-06, applied for by Aquaba Farms LLC, on property located at 11795 North Drive Clear Lake Park, further described as APN 010-019-015, does meet the requirements of Section 51.4 and Article 27, Section 1 of the Lake County Zoning Ordinance and the major use permit be granted, subject to the conditions and with the findings listed in the staff report dated June 23rd, 2022.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Please note that the applicant or any interested person is reminded that the zoning ordinance provides thirty-seven calendar day appeal period. If there is a disagreement with the Planning Commission, an appeal to the Board of Supervisors may be filed. The appropriate forms and applicable fee must be submitted prior to 5:00 PM on or before the seven calendar day following the commission's final determination. Moving on to item number three, Public Hearing on Consideration of a General Plan Conformity, GPC 22-03, An Adoption of SEQA Exemption CE 22-17 For Determination of Whether the Vacation of Forest Lake Drive Is In Conformity With the Lake County General Plan. The applicant and property owner is David Wignall, has requested the Department of Public Works, uh, to vacate a portion of Forest Lake Drive, which is approximately 0.27 miles in length and intersects with State Highway 175 and Brookside Drive. However, before the Department of Public Works can recommend the vacation, California Streets and Highway Code Section 8320 requires that the Planning Commission first determine whether the road vacation conforms to the Lake County General Plan. The proposed project is located at 16671 Forest Lake Drive, Cobb, California 95426, APN 013-056-13. In just a moment, while we, um, wait for staff to share their screen.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Planning Commissioners. Uh, this is, uh, my name's Laura Hall, and this is a general plan of conformity report for the vacation of Forest Lake Drive. The applicant is David Wignall, and he is also the property owner. Oops, sorry. Thank you. This is a location map of the property showing the applicant's parcels, which are APN, let me see, I think that's on the second page. APN 135613, 135611, 13569, 13568. And the addresses are 16671, 16645, 16761, 16795 in Forest Lake Drive, Cobb Mountain, California. Pursuant to Government Code 6542A and Streets and Highways Code 8320, both require that prior to street vacation, the Lake County Planning Commission must first consider whether or not the location, purpose, and extent of the potential vacation conforms to the Lake County General Plan. Just a little bit of background and history. In 2017, the applicant proposed a vacation of Forest Lake Drive and was assigned GPC 1703. Because the vacation would eliminate public access to several parcels, CDD was prepared to recommend denial of the request. Due to the potential future sale of land, no parcel can be landlocked. Shortly before the item was to be heard by the Planning Commission, the applicant requested a continuance so he could apply for a lot line adjustment to take care of the landlocked parcels. The Planning Commission agreed and continued the item to a date uncertain. All properties served by Forest Lake Drive affected by the road vacation have been surveyed. Access to all affected parcels would be insured with a Caltrans encroachment permit, deed of access easement, and proposed offer of right of way. A lot line adjustment was applied for in 2018 and recorded on July 15, 2021. The current GPC 2203 and CE 2217 application was applied for on March 7, 2022. The reasons for the road vacation are absence of public necessity, persistent theft and vandalism, personal, family, and public safety issues. And Forest Lake Drive is primarily used by the public as an unofficial passing lane, a dump, a frequent spot that people, um, drink alcohol and do drugs, and vandalism. Approval of the vacation would allow the applicant to secure his properties, thereby, thereby permit all the activities meant, uh, prevent all the activities mentioned above. To ensure public access to the parcels currently used in Forest Lake Drive, the applicant proposes an offer of right of way be deeded back to the county to serve parcels one, two, and three, and either a 20-foot wide access easement or a Caltrans permitted encroachment to serve parcels four and five. Public utility easements will remain in place and will be, and will be excluded from the public roadway vacation. These two exhibits, uh, the first one here shows the entire, um, extent that would be vacated. And number two shows the, um, right of way to be deeded back to the county to serve parcels one, two, and three, in case of a future sale of the land. And this, uh, number three and four, number three includes, uh, the 20-foot wide, uh, access easement to serve parcels four and five. And number four, or the Caltrans permitted encroachment. Photos were taken starting at, uh, Forest Lake Drive and Brookside Drive, walking 100 feet every 100 feet down Forest Lake Drive towards Highway 175, and this is 175. This is the beginning of the parcel that he, that we walked down these 100 feet, every 100 feet, and ended at Forest Lake Drive and Highway 175. Staff looked at, uh, the general plan, Chapter 6, Transportation and Circulation, uh, Gold 1, to provide implant for a unified, coordinated, and cost-efficient county-wide road and highway system that ensures safety and maintains adequate levels of service and efficient movement of people and goods. And Policy T 1.1, the county shall establish a road networks to, to accommodate projected growth and traffic volume resulting from residential development, commercial and tourism expansion, and geothermal activity and other industrial development. And Policy T 1.4, the county should continue to upgrade roads, the road system to reduce traffic accidents, improve circulation, and maintain its physical condition in conformance with the priorities and recommendations established in the Regional Transportation Plan. And staff response to, um, how the road vacation would be in conformity with those. Forest Lake Drive is not included in the county's circulation diagram, which is Figure 6.1. In addition, is not mentioned or included in, as a Class 3 proposed bikeway or LTA transit, transit route on Map 5 of the 2016 Act of Transportation Plan for Lake County, nor is it covered in the Lake County Draft 2022 Lake County Regional Plan as a road that needs to be improved. Therefore, Forest Lake Drive is not currently a general plan road. As mentioned previously, Forest Lake Drive is pre, is primarily used by the public as a unofficial passing lane for Southbound Motorist on State Highway 175. And comments received on the Lake County's Draft 2022 Lake County Regional Transportation Plan addresses the need for reduced speed limits along State Highway 175 in the Cobb Mountain area. In addition to the high speeds, the applicant says the roadway is also used as a party spot for drugs and alcohol. The vacation of Forest Lake Drive would bring the road into conformity with Gold T1 by ending these dangerous and unsafe and costly activities that are not only harmful to the applicant and his family, but surrounding property owners, as well as drivers along Forest Lake Drive and State Highway 175. And staff also looked at the general plan conformity, Chapter 5, Public Facilities and Services, Gold P, PFS 8, to provide adequate fire and police protection facilities and services to ensure the safety of county residents and the protection of the county property. Policy PS, PFS 8.3, Emergency Fire Access. The county shall require that all roads, road networks, public and private, are designed to provide for safety and ready access for emergency fire equipment and provide an alternative route for evacuations. Policy PFS 8.4, Visible Signage for Locating Roads and Buildings. The county shall ensure that all roads and buildings are properly identified by name and number with signs which are non-combustible and clearly visible from the main highways. The response was Forest Lake Drive was determined to, by the county, to provide adequate fire and police access requirements. Access to Forest Lake Drive would continue to come from State Highway 175. The applicant has met with the South Lake County Fire Protection District and the Lake County Sheriff's Department to discuss additional requirements if the vacation is approved, which would include NOx boxes and non-combustible, uh, address signage. And finally, the, uh, staff also looked at the Cobb Mountain Area Plan for Conformity. And Objective 5.6 in that plan is to ensure adequate public access for public motor vehicles, bicycles, and pedestrians for the orderly growth and development of the Cobb Mountain Area Plan. Policy 5.6A, Street and Highway Improvements and Priorities shall be consistent with the Cobb Mountain Area Circulation Plan as illustrated by Figure 16, located at the end of this document. The focus of the county roads project shall be on maintenance and safety improvements. Response to that is it is difficult to determine if Forest Lake Drive is included in the Cobb Mountain Area Circulation Plan as illustrated by Figure 16. However, Forest Lake Drive is not among the roadways listed in Section 5.2 of the Cobb Mountain Area Plan that includes principal collectors like State Route 175 and Bottle Rock Road, rural collectors such as Harrington Flat, Lockloman, Red Hills, and Sulfur Creek Roads, and private-maintained geyser roads, including Coldwater Creek, High Valley, and Sawmill Flat Roads. For the SEQA review, the proposed decision is not subject to the California Environmental Quality Act pursuant to Section 15060C2 of the State California, of the State SEQA Guidelines, California Code of Regulations, Title 14, Chapter 3. This activity only involves a report and determination concerning the consist, consistency of the potential road vacation with the county's general plan. Accordingly, there are no potential for disapproval resulting, resulting in any significant physical change to the environment, either directly or indirectly, and is not subject to SEQA review. Approvals for the vacation of the property will undergo further SEQA review through the Public Works Department's report. Comments received, we received comments, um, from agency stakeholders and tribal governments, and there was no adverse comments received. We received one comment from the public, um, that stated that they were not notified of the project, and they request postponement to allow more time to inform. And so staff recommends that the Planning Commission take the following action. Planning Commission, after reviewing the agenda report and receiving evidence at the public meeting, finds that the location, purpose, and extent of the proposed vacation of the property located at 16671, 16795, 16761, and 16645 Forest Lake Drive, Cobb Mountain, 954426 is in conformance with the Lake County General Plan pursuant to California Code, Section 65402. And s, some sample motions for SEQA determination. A, I move that the Planning Commission finds... Oh, okay, all right. And that's the end of the presentation?
Thank you. Okay, any questions for staff before I open it up for a public comment? Okay, public comment, will, um, we will open. Anyone wishing to speak on this item? Good morning, oh, almost afternoon.
Good morning, I'm David Wignall, I'm the owner of the property and the applicant. I just wanted to say thank you. I just wanted to say thank you for finally getting here. It's been a long time. I thank Laura and the many planners I've dealt with over the last six or seven years, and appreciate your time and effort.
Thank you.
And any questions you have, just holler.
Thank you very much. Jim, anybody in the Zoom room? No?
I don't see any hands in the Zoom room.
Okay. Not seeing anyone else wishing to speak on this item. We'll officially close public comment and bring it back to the commission for discussion or a motion.
Madam Chair, this seems pretty straightforward to me.
Pretty straightforward, yeah. I agree.
I'd be happy to offer a motion.
Please.
I move that the planning commission find that the analysis of consistency of the road vacation with the Lake County General Plan is not subject to sequa because it falls within Section 15060, Subs., Paragraph C2, and the State Sequa Guidelines, Division 6 of Chapter 3 of Title 14 of the California Code Regulations.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion carries.
I move that the planning commission find that the vacation of Forest Lake Drive, as proposed by David Wignall, is in conformity with the Lake County General Plan.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. That's it. Please note that the applicant or any interested person is reminded that the zoning ordinance provides for a seven calendar day appeal period. If there is a disagreement with the planning commission's recommendation, an appeal to the Board of Supervisors may be filed. The appropriate forms and applicable fee must be submitted prior to 5:00 p.m. on or before the seventh calendar day following the commission's final determination. Okay. Thank you, Laura.
Thank you.
Thanks. Onto our last item, last timed item, I should say. Public hearing on consideration of major use permit UP 20-97 and adoption of a categorical exemption CE 22-58 to satisfy the California Environmental Quality Act requirements related to potential environmental impacts. The applicant, Alchemy, is proposing a major use permit for one Type 6 non-volatile cannabis manufacturing license, which is the manufacturing of cannabis products for medical and adult cannabis use using non-volatile solvents or no solvent as defined by the Business and Professional Code, Section 40100. One, one-type P cannabis manufacturing license, and one Type 11 cannabis distributor license. The project is located at 12762 State Highway 29, Lower Lake, California, 95457, parcel number 012-023-25.
And legal notice has been determined on this matter.
Thank you, Jim.
That's okay, you can take that out.
If I may, I'll be making the presentation for this item.
The floor is yours, Byron.
All right, thank you. This is again Alchemy 29, Use Permit 20-97, and categorical exemption 2112. The date is wrong on that slide, that today is in fact the 28th.
We'll note that.
Yeah. Let's see. So, I'm going to present this project, and then I'm going to turn over the applicant, who does also have a presentation to give. The permit request, as you stated, is for a Type 6 non-volatile cannabis manufacturing license, a Type P cannabis manufacturing license, which is the packaging, and the Type 11 distributor license. It should be noted that there was some concern over two types of manufacturing. While the Lake County Code calls the Type P manufacturing, the state does not consider that manufacturing, but it's just a matter of nomenclature. This is not going to be two types of cannabis conversion. The zoning is M1, commercial and manufacturing. It's industrial under the general plan in the Lower Lake Planning Area. Parcels within the vicinity are zoned agricultural, commercial, manufacturing, and rural lands. It is in Supervisor District 1, approximately two and a half miles south of Lower Lake, the intersection of 29 and 53. This project consists of 65,700 square feet of existing buildings, seven of them. 50,000 square feet will be used for drying and storage, 5,000 for the non-volatile manufacturing, 2,500 for distribution, and 2,500 will be used for the processing, trimming, and packaging. There is also some administrative offices and support, loading platforms, and the property is accessed by State Highway 29. There is parking for 37 employees and visitors, as well as the required ADA parking. There's an existing well. Full security plan has been provided to the Community Development Department. Project is relatively flat and is 105 feet east of, I'm sorry, west of Copsy Creek, which is well within the appropriate distance. The regulations we reviewed for compliance, the Lake County General Plan and Lower Lake Area Plan, the Lake County Zoning Ordinance, and state regulations. Under the Lake County General Plan, it is industrial. There are no conflicting policies within the general plan, and as you know, there are not specific policies addressing commercial cannabis manufacturing and distribution in the general plan. As far as the Lower Lake Area Plan, again, we are reusing existing buildings, which is consistent with the area plan, and it's consistent with the existing development of the area, being that it's the old Parker Plastics site. Zoning ordinance, went through it already, it's a commercial manufacturing zone, and Article 27, the use is generally permitted. We're proposing a exemption, Class 1 categorical exemption. This class consists of essentially existing facilities. You are swapping out one industrial use for another, and in fact, this industrial use could be argued that it's far less impactful than the previous. Environmental recommendation, again, at the end, is to find that this is categorically exempt from sequa, and the use permit recommendation is that you approve Use Permit 20-97 with findings and conditions. I'm available for any questions, and I know, again, the applicant has a presentation that they would like to give as well.
Thank you, Byron. And is the applicant in chambers, or are we going to be doing it on Zoom?
I'm part of the applicant's team, my name is Dave Lambert, and I just got a message that the applicant is trying to find parking outside.
Okay, yeah, if you just, if we just want to, we can just wait if you'd like for a few minutes.
If you'd indulge us, thank you.
Yeah.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
In the meantime, just as a comment, I drive past this area all the time, almost every day. It's a great location, in my opinion, for this kind of activity, not only in terms of the location, you really have to know where you're looking as you drive by, but also the use of existing buildings for, frankly, a better processing project.
I think that's great as well, and anything beats anything sitting empty. Good morning.
Hi, good morning.
Are you the one we were waiting for?
I am.
If you want to take a second and-
No, it's okay, she's, sorry, that was loud. My name is Sarah Bodnar, I'm a consultant that's been working on this project, and Autumn, the applicant, is right behind me. She's coming in through the metal detector now. But while I have this moment and while you're waiting, I just wanted to say personally thank you to Byron and Andrew for your work on this project. It's been tremendous to work with you, and they've done really thorough work, and under difficult circumstances of managing a workload of, you know, I like to say, your air traffic control for hundreds of projects in this county, and we're really excited about today. We're excited about putting this project before you and what it's going to create for the county. So Autumn will be here just momentarily.
Excellent, thank you.
She's going even way before.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We're ready for you whenever you are, Autumn.
Great.
It's okay.
Hello, thank you for having me today, planning commissioners. I am so excited to be here and present our project, Alchemy 29. This project has been-
I hate to cut you off before we get started. Will you just state your first and last name for us?
Autumn Karsi.
Thank you.
So this project has been the culmination of two years of hard work from some really incredible people, and in a lot of ways, it's the culmination of my entire 18 years of design development and experience in the cannabis industry. Next slide, please. So, a little bit about my background, I'm a resident of Kelseyville. I started the first women-led design-build company in the cannabis space. I've been a speaker at over 50 conferences internationally, and I focus on sustainable and environmentally responsible building practices. I've developed facilities for clients in over 25 states and three countries. I'm also the host of a YouTube series called Can a Crib's Deeper Roots, where we tour some of the largest and most impressive grows in the world. So, we've merged together experience, science, and technology, along with sustainability, to create Alchemy 29. Next slide, please. So our permit requests are one Type 6 non-volatile cannabis manufacturing license, one Type P cannabis manufacturing license, and one Type 11 cannabis distributor license. So we designed this facility with the intent in mind of providing large-scale cultivation, processing, services to Lake County farmers. Right now, all of this processing is done out of county, and we're losing that 2.5% gross receipts revenue. So, right here was, actually just last week, some of our local farms won gold at the state fair. This was the first time that the state fair allowed for a cannabis competition, and so there was an award show, and you can see some of our local farmers pictured here that actually won those awards. So, we're trying to create product lines that offer drying, trimming, solventless manufacturing, label printing, packaging of products for small farms. Right now, we're facing corporations that create a very uneven playing field. Through the use of automated equipment and technology, we believe that we can scale our small farms to compete with those industries, where we can produce packaged product at 1,000 bags per hour. We can run solventless at about 300 pounds in a single shift. So we have invested in the large-scale equipment that the big corporations do, and we're providing that at a small cost to local farmers here. Next slide, thanks. So we can pick up flour from the farms through our distribution vehicles, we can take it to our facility for processing, and then we can turn it into consumer products. Next one? Ooh, okay. I don't know what happened to this slide, but it looks like our buildings, but it's it's upside down. Can we flip it?
Well, we saw it in the presentation from the planner, so maybe we can flip this slide, unless you want to explain a little more?
I'll just briefly go into it. Okay, so the front entrance there is Highway 29, where you see the entrance. We've worked with Caltrans to upgrade the encroachment so that a 53-foot truck can pull into that facility with two tailcars behind it and not obstruct traffic on Highway 29 at any given time. So it would come in from the farms, everything lands in Building 7. We have five bays in Building 7, and we can dry about a half acre per bay, and those will get flipped out every seven days or so. Then everything can move to Building 4, where it gets trimmed, and it's either delineated between Building 5 or Building 3. Building 3 is our packaging lines, so that's where all of our dried flour products will go, and then Building 5 will be manufacturing. Buildings 1 and 2 are overflow and consolidation curing areas, where anything that's consolidated from Building 7 that's not ready to be packaged yet can be stored in Building 1 or 2. Building 6 is basically our packaging storage, so no cannabis activity takes place in Building 6. Next slide. So as I mentioned, we're revitalizing the Parker Plastics facility. We have a very good relationship with Parker Plastics, and so we actually bought all of their cases from them when we purchased the building, and that's what we're going to use to deliver our cannabis products to distros and retail outlets. They're really nice cases, they're rotationally molded plastic, they do lock, and so you can secure your product when you're going from one place to the next, and we will offer former Parker Plastics employees the first round when we do job fairs. So this is a little bit about our facility and my background. I've worked in a lot of federally compliant environments where we see much more stringent regulations than we do here in California. So I've designed this building to meet a federally compliant standard, from the software that we put into our structure, to the size of the hallways, to the ISO and clean room standards. So we have a backbone software which feeds into metric, and what this does is it offers complete transparency, not only to our clients, but also to our customers. So if we were to take a batch of cannabis from a client, they would be able to see transparently where it is at the cycle at any given time, including where it stands in the machines when it's running. So, this makes it easy for any kind of recalls or anything that happens once it leaves our facility and goes to a retail outlet. We can easily trace back a skew to the plant it came from, and then every skew that it went into after that. We comply with all California state mandated testing guidelines, we adhere to good manufacturing practices, or GMP, and we include ISO 8 standards in our clean room where we bottle our solventless products so that we don't have skin follicles or hair or anything unwanted falling into a consumer product. We utilize Fisal technology, which is also photohydroionization, which is a technology developed by NASA, where basically it reduces COVID-19 where positively charged ions attach to negatively charged ions, and that creates a sense of gravity. So if someone were to sneeze, these photohydroionization cells would kind of float through the air, and it would become, attached to the sneeze, it becomes 100 times heavier than gravity, falls to the floor where your cleaning SOP should take care of it. So we put the overall health and well-being of our employees and customers first. Next slide, please. Our water usage. So when I asked community development if we needed a water availability analysis for this structure, I was told that we did not because we were not cannabis. But we wanted to understand our overall cumulative impact and if we were less impactful than the businesses before us, so we did do a water availability analysis, which was included in our original application submission, and we have proved that we use over 200,000 gallons a year less than Parker Plastics. Next. Odor mitigation. So we use MERV-14 filters throughout the whole facility. Our HVAC systems are closed loop, so they condition the air in the space, they do not exhaust to the outside of the building, and if we bring in any new occupancy air per code, that is also filtered through MERV-14 filters. We maintain a minimum R-value of 22 on all of our buildings, so that prevents leakage of any smell getting to the exterior envelope of the structure. And this is just a little bit about our team. I really do stand on the shoulders of giants, and I would not be here today if I didn't have such an incredible team. have such an incredible team. So I've handpicked all these people throughout my years of experience in developing facilities, and fortunately, they all said yes. So, Shored Brooks is our founder, co-founder and COO. He has 25 years' experience in breeding and genetics, and he formed one of the first cannabis colleges in Amsterdam, East Dutch. He was the director of genetics for Wilcox Farm in Arizona, which is a seven-acre Venlo greenhouse under glass, and he assisted in starting Sunday Goods, which currently holds 10% of the Arizona market, which is no easy feat. Barbara Semple is our CPA and CFO. She is a certified public accountant, she's managed multiple businesses with over $1 billion in revenue and 1,000-plus employees. She currently manages a portfolio of over 25 profitable companies. Adam Moody is our director of manufacturing, he has 16 years' experience in commercial cannabis, he specializes in solventless extraction. He was the former director of Lowell's Herb Company, which is also one of the largest producers in the state of solventless products. Richard Lavelle is a consultant, and he's our project manager right now. He's licensed in 22 states as an architect, he has 30-plus years in commercial architectural background, and he also has a high level of security. Next. So these are some of the publications that we've been featured in recently, members of our team. We have a lot of mainstream media publications, as well as cannabis publications. Next. So Lake County is our home, and we want to provide 25 new full-time jobs with competitive wages, 401Ks, dental, vision, all the benefits. I like to say that our facility builds careers. Cannabis is one of those industries where you don't need a college degree to do it, the ceiling hasn't been built yet, so if you come to work for a company in its nascent stage, you do have the ability to grow. So, that's very near and dear to my heart, I've seen people start at the bottom, and within a few years, they're running the company. So that's very exciting to us. We will generate 2.5% tax revenue on gross receipts for Lake County, we're active members of the Chamber of Commerce, and the Lake County Cannabis Alliance. And I just want to thank you again for your consideration.
Thank you.
Well, and any questions, happy to answer.
Thank you. Cool. Any other questions or comments from the public while we have public comment open and the applicant here? All right.
Hi there, Erin McCarry, City of Clear Lake, I put it on my number four on here already, we're good?
Just another check mark.
Yep. Really awesome project, you know, from a planning commission, it is pretty cut and dry, perspective, it is pretty cut and dry. From a character perspective, Autumn is amazing, really rooted in the community, always supportive of all folks in the industry. And then from a business standpoint, I run a distribution company in Clear Lake, and we send thousands of dollars out down to Southern California to get flour rolled into pre-rolls, so to have this down the road would be huge, as you mentioned, keep that 2.5% gross in the county, keep jobs in the county, and really, this is a really good cornerstone of the cannabis community in Lake County if it is approved. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Afternoon yet? Nope, still morning. Morning. Jennifer Smith. This has got to be one of the most exciting projects we've ever seen in the cannabis industry in Lake County. It is exciting, it is forward-thinking, and it is so needed. As a cultivator, I spend so much time sourcing companies that we can work with in a timely manner, and like Erin mentioned, we're shipping stuff to LA to be processed, Sacramento to be processed, and from a logistics standpoint, it's a nightmare. Also being in such a remote rural community, it puts us in a position where we can push our product out, rather than waiting for packaging companies or distributors to come pull our product out. I mean, everybody drives by a bunch of other resources before they get to Lake County, and so they have the chance to stop and get other people's product, whereas if we can have our stuff packaged here, ready to go, and push it out ourselves, it is such a win. And the 2.5% obviously is to the bottom line of the county, and that's money that we're missing out on right now, and that our community is missing out. The jobs that this creates, the hole in our, in the vertical integration, and in the supply chain it fills, is just, I can't speak enough to it. As far as Alchemy 29 and the characters involved, longstanding, well-respected cannabis community members, renowned professionals, actually, and we're really lucky to have their presence here in Lake County. So from a cultivator standpoint, from an industry leader standpoint, we can't wait to have this project, and it is, it's a godsend to many of us. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Hi, I'm Pamela Harpster, I'm the branch manager for Management Connections right here in Lakeport, and I live in Lakeport, and I've been helping them with their staffing since they've been, you know, since they've been working on the different projects, and our properties, I should say. And I have, you know, I deal with a lot of business owners in dealing with a lot of employee, you know, relationships, and I have to say that there's some that are just extremely superior, and I would have to say this group is amazing, they're very supportive of their employees, they provide incredible training and support for them. I think this is going to be a really good thing for our economy and for our workforce, and so I do definitely want to support this project. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Good morning, commissioners, my name is Alicia Russell, and I have a letter in front of me that is a support from the Lake County Chamber of Commerce, and I know that that was entered in, I wanted to be sure that you have received it. Okay. Perfect. So, from my personal perspective, having grown up in Lake County, I remember there was a time when there were numerous pear sheds to process, all the pears that were being grown in Lake County, and now we're down to just having, you know, one, and a lot of pears get taken out of the area to be processed in the valley. So all of those jobs, all that money goes away, and we have that happening in the cannabis community right now, where all of it gets taken out of the county for processing, all those jobs, all that money is going out of the county. This is an opportunity to keep that in the county, keep the jobs, keep the tax revenue, keep it here, keep it local, so I hope you'll support this project.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else wishing to speak on this before I close public comment? Any hands in the Zoom room, Jim?
Yes, we have one in the Zoom room.
Okay.
Richard Durham? Durham?
Richard Durham?
Yep.
We're going to unmute you, and you'll be able to speak, please state your first and last name.
Can you hear me? Hello?
Yep, we can hear you.
Oh, sorry, okay. Yeah, my name is Richard Durham, I'm a cultivator and cultivation consultant, and this day has been a long time coming. I reiterate everything each speaker who said, and I won't take up your time, because it's precious, I just ask you to pass this, so that we can, us farmers have a resource here in Lake County, which will save our lives. So with that, thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. Okay. I don't believe we have any other hands in the Zoom room.
No, we do not.
Thank you, I'll take one last look around the chambers, and we do not have anyone wishing to speak, so I will close public comment. And before I let my other commissioners speak, let me just say welcome, you know, just to see something, your presentation and the caliber that you are hopefully bringing to Lake County is an awesome way to set the bar, it's extremely exciting to see it come. I also will echo what one of the other ladies had mentioned about the empty processing plants that we have here. Multiple, right? And we are, are and were an agricultural community, so to see something like this come here is super exciting and good to have. I would love to keep all of the product that we are approving here and growing here, and really brand, you know, Lake County for what it is. Another thing that I will just kind of touch on, that my little light bulb went off when you were doing your presentation, Commissioner Chavez and I got to go to Arcata last year for a planning commissioner conference, and Arcata has cannabis innovation zoning, and what they are doing is taking old lumber mills and, you know, kind of doing, not necessarily the same thing, but taking those, those old buildings and that old, I won't even say old, but at the time, you know, it was a well-bran machine, and instead of seeing those buildings sit empty, they are actually bringing, you know, kind of embracing the new change, the new community, the new product. So, that being said, I'm very excited to see this here in the county, so I think we kind of know where I stand on that, but I will let my other commissioners go ahead and say something.
Madam Chair, this is in District 1, and I am a strong supporter of this application, I think it's a missing component in the Lake County cannabis loop.
Absolutely.
And one that is, without repeating what's already been said here today, really fills a gap, and the point about production and processing here in county is so important, so I'm happy to support this today.
Yeah, I couldn't agree more with the, with my fellow commissioners, perfect location. It sounds like you guys have a great team, very impressive presentation as well, and the technology that you guys are putting into these facilities, it's really awesome, so, thank you.
And just on a side note, I have not come across one applicant, really, that isn't involved in, you know, the Lake County Cannabis Coalition and like all of the other links, and I feel like the more links that you guys are able to make, and everyone in the community, that makes us a lot stronger, it's a stronger net, I guess you could say. So, it's really nice to see each other supporting one another, because we kind of need it. So, I think, I would love to make a motion, but I think the floor is yours.
Madam Chair? I move that the planning commission find that the categorical exemption CE 22-58, applied for by Alchemy 29 LP, on property located at 12762 State Highway 29, Lower Lake, California, and further described as APN 012-023-25, will not have a significant effect on the environment, and therefore a Class 1 categorical exemption pursuant to Section 15301 of the SEQA guideline shall be approved with the findings listed in the staff report dated July 28, 2022.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
I move further that the planning commission find that the major use permit UP 20-97, applied for by Alchemy 29 LP, on property located at 12762 State Highway 29, Lower Lake, California, and further described as APN 012-023-25, does meet the requirements of Section 51.4 in Article 27, Sections AU, AV, and AX of the Lake County Planning Zoning, the Lake County Zoning Ordinance, and the major use permit be granted to the, subject to the conditions and with the findings listed in the staff report dated July 28, 2022.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Please note that the applicant or any interested person is reminded that the zoning ordinance provides for a seven calendar day appeal period. If there is a disagreement with the planning commission, an appeal to the Board of Supervisors may be filed. The appropriate forms and applicable fee must be submitted prior to 5:00 PM on or before the seventh calendar day following the commission's final determination. All right. Thank you again for your time, thank you everyone who's spent time here in chambers. Excellent. Okay. We are moving on, discussion regarding September 22, 2022, planning commission conflict.
Thank you.
Hi, Ms. Maria.
Hello, the Board of Supervisors has their annual budget hearing scheduled for the 21st and the 22nd in this chambers, so we do recommend that our meeting not be held at that time.
All right. And do we need to make a motion on, do us go ahead and adjourn that meeting, or is it just discussion? I think it just, it just shows discussion here, so we can make a motion maybe after the, maybe when we have a full panel?
I will defer that to Nicole.
Okay. She can't fill my eyes on her, but I'm looking at her.
I'm working on it right now.
It's okay.
Your commission can certainly discuss the matter, and you could... It has been agendized, and it is a timed item, so you could make a decision today, but you were correct, it does say discussion, and if you would feel more comfortable having the decision made by the commission, the full commission, or more than just three members of the commission.
Okay.
Then you can certainly continue this item to the next meeting, and then the action option is, is an adjournment of the regular meeting for the 22nd.
Okay. I think that we can make an executive decision now amongst the three of us to go ahead and adjourn that meeting for September.
I agree with that.
Okay, so it's an informal motion and a second, all in favor for adjourning the September 22, 2022 meeting?
Aye.
Opposed? Awesome, motion carries. So, office news, if we, if we could, please, thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to start with me.
Right?
I am very excited to be on my second week as deputy director, it's great to be home. And Mary is currently on vacation, she's out of the state until mid-week next week, so if you have any concerns or need to reach out, I'll make sure that you have my cellphone, so you can reach me directly. An item that is coming up for your review on the 11th is regarding early activation permits. Yesterday, was it yesterday? Tuesday, the Board of Supervisors did pass a resolution, or an urgency ordinance, establishing a moratorium for the early activation permits, which they had previously, but that one lapsed, we had additional findings that were able to justify a new moratorium. They also adopted the resolution of an intent to amend the ordinance regarding early activation permits. Additionally, they directed the newly-formed cannabis task force, as well as the planning commission, to consider recommendations that will be presented to them within 35 days of Tuesday. So we're on kind of a tight timeline, but the task force has already been notified that our first meeting is going to be on August 1, and that is their one item of consideration that will give staff enough time to generate a memorandum that will go before you that includes their recommendations, so you're not starting from scratch.
Excellent, okay.
That's about it, thank you very much.
It's great to have you.
Yes, it is great to have you, like I said, just not only a familiar face, but some roots, it does, it does mean a lot, so we're happy to have you.
Thank you.
All right, any other discussion? You guys want to talk about lunch, or, you know, the Giants, or anything like that? Meeting adjourned.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure lunch is-
An option?
Than your authority or-
Right? Man! I'm going to adjourn the meeting, thank you.